Bienvenidos a esta sesión organizada por UNESCO. Me gustaría presentarles nuestra iniciativa que se llama PERFORM. Y voy a empezar diciendo que UNESCO es sobre construir paz en la mente de los hombres y las mujeres. Y nuestro enfoque en construir paz es empezando desde muy temprano. Así que los jóvenes son el primer paso porque las generaciones futuras son responsables de la paz. Y PERFORM es un proyecto creado por la idea de algunos científicos en cooperación con nosotros en UNESCO para utilizar nuevos enfoques en la comunicación y la educación de la ciencia. Y enfoques innovadores que usan artes de actuación para educar y comunicar la ciencia. Así que la idea es que a veces si quieres desarrollar interés en la ciencia necesitas cambiar con innovación. Necesitas realmente promover una nueva y diferente forma de comunicar la ciencia. Y este ha sido el principal motor del proyecto. Pero al mismo tiempo, pensamos que es importante el enlace entre el desarrollo profesional, las oportunidades profesionales y las carreras científicas. Así que tendremos una primera introducción de nuestro colega, Dr. Yusuf Abdalat, de la Universidad de Jordan, que introducirá la iniciativa de Faculty for Factory. Esta es una iniciativa de Jordan, así que, Dr. Abdalat.
Gracias a todos por su atenencia y gracias, señor presidente, de la sesión y a nuestra gente. Está bien, me entiendo que me tomen de aquí, que sea así. Y realmente estamos muy felices aquí en Jordan porque vemos apreciación y felicidad desde los ojos de todos los atentos. Esto es increíble y una gran reunión de estudiantes y personas de todas partes del mundo. Muchas gracias por venir y por asistir a esta sesión. Hoy hablaremos sobre, como nuestro colega mencionó, muchas gracias por sus iniciativas y la ignición de cómo hacer símbolos de la ciencia y la vida y cosas felices con todo el input para obtener resultados buenos. Hoy hablaremos de la iniciativa y el programa Jordan, un programa nacional llamado Faculty for a Factory. Es un programa nacional que une entre la academia y la industria en Jordan. Y cuando nos referimos a industria, es que nos referimos a todos los sectores, tanto industria, superficie, comercial y todo. Y enfocamos en esos programas, hablamos de experiencia en la posting y fortalecimiento de los emprendedores, empresarios e innovadores y metodologías. Y sabemos, quiero decir, el mayor crecimiento exponencial en estas cosas, ciertas cosas empiezan con el crecimiento exponencial en los datos. Y ustedes saben que los datos son hoy en día lo más importante, son los datos especialmente con la ciencia, datos y todo. La otra cosa es la información, ustedes saben que la información es poder. Y la tercera cosa que hablamos de es el conocimiento, está bien? O sea, quiero decir, todos los aspectos y ramas de conocimiento en la vida, así como la tecnología. Y ustedes saben, debido a estas cosas, quiero decir, evitar participar en tales ventures. Debido a que tenemos falta de fuentes y la laga del mundo. Algo importante sobre esto, hablaremos de innovación y de la empresarialidad. Pero desde nuestra experiencia, estamos buscando tal vez diferentes puntos de vista, hablaremos de las cosas. Y enfocaremos en Jordan como un caso de estudio, ya sea desde el principio de la Universidad de Jordan y luego explicaremos nuestra experiencia o cosas en toda la Universidad de Jordan. En Jordan, en realidad, es bien conocido por la educación y recursos humanos calificados. Así que tenemos un punto positivo y un punto de fortaleza en Jordan, ya sea el sistema educativo y la gestión de la salud. Somos buenos y consideramos tal vez el mejor en la área o en la región árabe. Sin embargo, para mantener esto con las transacciones mencionadas antes, una necesidad urgente es actualizar estas fuerzas al充实 recursos, recursos humanos y capacidad de posting para aumentar nuestra producción nacional representada por el PIB y PIB per capital. Estas son cosas que en realidad, no solo para la educación y los recursos humanos, sino también para permitirles iniciar su propio negocio en el campo, quiero decir, aquí en su campo, para avanzar en nuevos trabajos y generar ingresos. Cuando mencionamos aquí su campo, no solo quiero decir enfocarse porque en Jordan en realidad tenemos algo que tal vez es diferente en el mundo. Basado en la población, la gente ama mucho especialmente la medicina y ingeniería. Y realmente esto nos da, quiero decir, nos da algo diferente, el triángulo se convierte en opuesto. La población en Jordan, especialmente en ingeniería, es como un porcentaje de personas, es el más alto tal vez en el mundo con población de Jordan. Así que ahora estamos buscando la armonización entre los mercados locales y globales con lo que está siendo un tough instituto educativo. Está bien, programa nacional para unir el sector industrial con la academia, es un ejemplo, tratar de traer, o reducir el rango, o tratar de resolver este problema. Lo que llamamos, es como un triple FF, Faculty for a Factory. Es un puente entre la academia y la industria. Y esta iniciativa comenzó en 2003 en la universidad de Jordan y especialmente en la facultad de ingeniería y tecnología. Enfocada especialmente más en el departamento de ingeniería industrial con 20 colegas y amigos y socios allí. Y luego se convirtió, después de, quiero decir, en 2004 se convirtió en doble, luego en 2006 se convirtió en programa nacional, involucrado en todas las universidades de Jordan, universidades privadas y gubernamentales. Y también no solo el puente del rango, sino también obtenemos like networking entre el sector industrial, universidades, gobierno, sector privado. Y podemos realmente decir que es un real partido con todos, quiero decir, involucrados, socios o quienes quieran llamarlo, ya sea universidades o académicas, gobierno, sector privado y NGOs también. El propósito o visión del programa, en realidad, tenemos muchos factores. Primero, fortalecer la investigación científica aplicada. Ustedes saben, es que la gente siempre, quiero decir, especialmente las personas académicas, la mayoría de las personas dicen que son personas teóricas, no van para aplicar. Y para ciertos límites, eso es correcto realmente, porque la mayoría de nosotros, hemos graduado, especialmente las personas académicas de Jordan aquí, hemos graduado de universidades de Willno en el mundo, pero también queremos terminar y volver pronto a Jordan. No teníamos como que experimentar cosas o, quiero decir, casos de estudio reales, está bien? Otras cosas también, nuestro objetivo, darle a los académicos la oportunidad de desarrollar su conocimiento y aplicar sus conceptos teóricos. Y eso también, en directo, afectará al estudiante en el aula, no solo para ser por libro, también experimentar. Y podemos conseguir el tercer, ayudar a las organizaciones industriales a crecer, permitirles tomar ventajas de la experiencia técnica disponible, necesitan resolver problemas y desarrollar su producto o servicio. Porque comenzamos al principio, solo diagnostico un estudio, luego resolución de problemas, pero ahora en la era incluso de ir para la innovación y el desarrollo productivo y ayudar a la industria en Jordan incluso a abrir nuevos mercados. Ustedes saben, algunos mercados necesitan alguna estandarización, algunos necesitan que se basen en la estandarización o alguna calificación. Ayudamos a la industria mucho en esto. Así que la relación con nosotros, relación de victoria entre, ustedes saben, la academia, cuando mencioné la academia, todo ha sido parte de la materia académica, quiero decir, los profesores, el estudiante, la relación y la industria también. Y estas son las cosas en las que creemos, como cuando resolvimos problemas y cosas diagnósticas, ahora estamos involucrados en la innovación y educación. Así que esto es tan importante, en Jordan realmente sufrimos muchos problemas, no económicos, incluso en muchas cosas, incluso en los recursos. Tal vez estemos, ustedes nos rodean muchos países petroleros, pero desafortunadamente somos el tercer país pobre en el mundo del agua, ustedes saben. Está bien, incluso nuestros mares son el mar, así que tenemos problemas reales en el agua. Así que enfocamos en la educación, debe ser hiperado con la innovación, no solo mencionamos la innovación, incluso la innovación con la empresarialidad. Enfocamos en la educación y hacerla como una cultura, no solo implementarla en el colegio o la escuela superior, sino también y sin exageración, debe implementarse en nuestros temas de infantes. Eso es lo que creemos, hacerlo como una verdadera innovación como cultura. Y también traer al sistema escolar, lo que llamamos consejo de carrera, para que el estudiante se encuentre desde el principio, desde el primer KG, está bien? Ya sea lo que quiera, puede ir, no solo un poco para cambiar lo que tenemos en la cultura en Jordan, solo la medicina o la ingeniería, esto es de alto nivel, sino que lo fundamos también porque hay muchos estudiantes tales. También, otra cosa es también la responsabilidad de todo instituto de educación nacional para proporcionar el siguiente etapa de educación con la preparación adecuada y preparada para que cumpla con los requisitos actuales de obtener el mejor resultado de la etapa de cambio. Ahora hablaremos sobre el FF en la Universidad de Jordan. En este sentido, ahora comenzamos con nuestra experiencia en la educación industrial y también en los sectores privados y necesidades de mercado. Ahora estamos preparando cursos, cursos especiales, no cursos de formación, es un curso de tres horas de crédito en la Universidad de Jordan. Se llama, se enfoca en la empresarialidad y la innovación con 16 semanas, con más de 84 horas de clases, está bien? Comenzamos desde el principio y no solo enfocamos para los estudiantes de ingeniería, negocio o gestor de trabajo, o IT. En realidad, antes, con la cultura, muchas personas piensan que solo porque comienzan la innovación con la revolución de la IT, no. Hacemos este curso y el material del curso con cualquier background especial de un estudiante, ya sea de ingeniería, medicina, farmacéutica, negocio, incluso con aquellos, incluso estudiantes lingüísticos, incluso aquellos que estudian religioses. Así que con esos estudiantes, tenemos un gran desafío, todo el tiempo aquí. Está bien, un poco de respiración, está bien. Así que queremos hacer algo incluso de innovación, no solo de innovación. Comienza desde el principio, hacerlo como una cultura, un estilo de vida, implementar la innovación, como mencioné, un curso empresarial. Y esto, solo esta foto, es mi estudiante, ahora comenzamos como proyecto bíblico, este es el curso en el departamento de ingeniería industrial. Desde el próximo febrero será para todos los estudiantes de la Universidad de Jordan, tenemos 43.000 estudiantes y también tenemos 19 facultades, 95 especialidades con 17 nacionalidades en la Universidad de Jordan, así que será abierto para ellos. Otra cosa también, estamos planeando este curso en un equipo multidisciplinar con industria, con background, con todo, incluso especialidad. Son diferentes profesionales complementándose unos con otros, así que también creemos traer todos esos diferentes o background o especialidades juntos para obtener un real output, enfocarnos en lo que hacemos y lo que necesitamos. Otras cosas ahora también, creemos ahora enfocarnos en sectores. Esto es algo, no solo para preparar al estudiante con una nueva idea y mentalidad, sino también en la empleabilidad. Y ahora enfocamos, por ejemplo, solo daré un caso de estudio de la industria farmacéutica. Preparamos a nuestros estudiantes para entrenarlos para encontrar un trabajo con esos estudiantes. Por ejemplo, en la industria farmacéutica, todos esos especialidades están entrados en estudiantes farmacéuticos, ya sea ciencia, background de estudiante, farmacia, gestión, medicina, química, ingeniería, marketing. Así que preparamos a todos esos estudiantes para ese sector, luego de eso, en realidad, el resultado. Ahora enfocamos en otras cosas también, ahora encontramos, es nuestra comercialización comercializada de productos de investigación en Jordan. Así que ahora comenzamos a trabajar en estas cosas, ya sea desde el proyecto final de año o el trabajo de investigación, cómo finalizar y hacer esto con valor y comercializar estas cosas.
Muchas gracias. Fue muy importante, has estado hablando sobre abarcar el rango y ese es un paso importante de nuestro proceso porque engañar a los jóvenes en carreras científicas significa que necesitas dar la esperanza de un desarrollo profesional después de sus estudios. Y así esta iniciativa muestra cómo crear estos puertos es esencial para motivar a los estudiantes jóvenes porque motivamos solo a través de la educación, pero luego tienes que darles la posibilidad de seguir adelante. Y esta iniciativa es un gran ejemplo, muchas gracias. Y vamos a poner la cuestión. Pero por supuesto tenemos que empezar con los jóvenes y a los jóvenes, me gustaría dar el plazo a otro de nuestros panelistas que es, ustedes quieren sentarse aquí, el profesor Stanislav Dovgi, que es el presidente de la Academia Minor de Ciencias de Ucrania. Es una iniciativa muy importante involucrando a los jóvenes. Tendremos una traducción simultánea de, ¿de Rusia?
Buenas tardes a todos. No, él está hablando en ucraniano y yo voy a traducir, así que ustedes escucharán todo lo que está hablando. Él querría presentarnos con la experiencia ucraniana de trabajo con niños donados. Así que trabajamos con niños de escuela, alumnos. Ucrania tiene 42.5 millones de población, 3.800.000 alumnos y 1.600.000 estudiantes. Comenzamos en el año 2000. La idea fue involucrar a nuestros estudiantes de escuela de alrededor de 14 años de edad, alumnos, en un trabajo creativo y de investigación. Comenzamos con cinco temas de escuela: física, matemáticas, química, biología, geografía. Y el primer experimento tuvo lugar involucrando las universidades y la academia. Ofrecimos a los estudiantes con los temas de investigación. Y los alumnos seleccionaban temas y les ofrecían mentor de investigación. Durante varios años han estado trabajando en la investigación y luego presentaron su investigación al público. Desarrollamos metodologías para involucrar a los estudiantes en actividades de investigación científica y involucramos los laboratorios que estaban disponibles en las universidades y la academia. Así que comenzamos desde las grandes ciudades y luego extendíamos a las más pequeñas comunidades. Y ahora fuimos online y los niños se infatiguaron con estas ideas y actividades. Así que el primer año comenzamos con 6.000 alumnos, alumnos, y cinco temas. Así que en 16 años terminamos con 250.000 alumnos, alumnos, y 64 temas o especialidades. Creamos nuestros propios laboratorios. Luego se mudaron a los centros regionales y a los centros oblos. Y hoy más de 10.000 pedagógos o mentores científicos están involucrados en esta actividad. El trabajo más duro aquí fue proporcionar a los maestros con apoyo metodológico y educarlos en cómo hacerlo. Algunas disciplinas, los maestros fueron educados en Ucrania y algunos maestros se fueron a extranjas para obtener la nueva metodología actual en educar a los niños en la investigación. Por ejemplo, la física de energías más altas. Enviamos a nuestros pedagógicos a... Anualmente enviamos a unos 30 maestros a turnar en Suiza. Cada año cuando esta cantidad de maestros regresan a Ucrania, se difunde la información entre los maestros locales. Así que anualmente tomamos hasta más de 100 CPD, desarrollo profesional en Ucrania anualmente. Luego descubrimos también que durante 14 años, cuando los niños llegan a 40 años, es demasiado tarde para comenzarlos a involucrar en la investigación. Los pedagógicos necesitan usar la inminente inquisición o habilidades inquisitivas del niño desde muy temprana edad.
Muchas gracias. Estamos muy felices de tenerlos aquí porque esta iniciativa está absolutamente en línea con nuestra idea en UNESCO de que tenemos que promover este proyecto PERFORM fuera de nuestros tres países piloto. PERFORM, y ahora vamos al núcleo de la presentación sobre el proyecto, es un proyecto financiado por la Comisión Europea en el programa Horizon 2020. Y tenemos tres países pilotos, Francia, Reino Unido y España. Pero el rol de UNESCO es difundir esta nueva y innovadora metodología que está fuera de estos países, fuera de estos países pilotos, especialmente en nuestros países vecinos como Ucrania, y el caso de Ucrania es muy importante porque, como ustedes saben, la historia reciente del país es absolutamente crucial para la construcción de la paz en Europa especialmente. Así que ahora introduciremos a nuestros colegas de PERFORM, Isabel Ruiz, de la Universidad Open de Catalunya, Universidad Adoberta de Catalunya. Que también es territorio en Europa que ahora está bajo atención por falta de paz. Así que Isabel, por favor.
Buenas tardes. Quiero primero dar un aplauso a la gente ucraniana. Nuestro proyecto, como dijo Casimiro, nació con el mismo concepto que nuestros colegas en Ucrania. Queríamos averiguar nuevas formas de enseñar la ciencia para engañar a los jóvenes más en ciencia, tecnología, ingeniería, matemáticas, así que se estén, ¿no? Problemas y pensamos que una buena forma de hacer eso fue a través de interdisciplinariedad. Y si recuerdan esta mañana en la sesión plenaria, hubo algunos llamados para involucrar en interdisciplinariedad cuando se hace la ciencia y la investigación. Así que nuestra propuesta fue usar las artes de actuación en clase de ciencia para involucrar a los jóvenes más en la ciencia y también motivarlos más a estudiar una carrera científica en el futuro. Y ustedes pueden decir, está bien, ya hay algunas experiencias unidas las artes o las artes de actuación con la educación de la ciencia. Así que, ¿cuál es el valor añadido de PERFORM? El valor añadido es que estamos hechos para traer la dimensión humana de la ciencia a través de la prueba de nuevos métodos de educación de la ciencia basados en las artes de actuación. ¿Y cuál es esta dimensión humana de la ciencia? Se trata de valores. Ahora, el programa European Commission Horizon 2020 está guiado a través de un marco llamado Investigación Responsable y Innovación. Y esto se trata de valores como inclusividad, considerar requerimientos éticos, equilibrio de género, compromiso de los actores sociales. Así que queríamos traer estos valores que eran perdidos en nuestra forma de hacer la ciencia a la aula. Así que, ¿qué hicimos? Trabajamos en tres casos de estudios porque este es nuestro proyecto de investigación. Testamos, trabajamos con tres tipos diferentes de métodos basados en arte. Uno es la comedia en España, el otro es basking en el Reino Unido y ustedes verán al final de la sesión un ejemplo de basking de ciencia, así que deben quedarse aquí. Y también estamos trabajando con Clown basado en teatro improvisatorio en Francia. ¿Qué estamos haciendo? Conducimos una serie de workshops explorativos para averiguar qué eran las percepciones de los estudiantes de la escuela secundaria y las actitudes sobre la ciencia relacionadas con este enfoque de Investigación Responsable y Innovación a la ciencia. Así que les preguntamos si consideraban que la ciencia estaba relacionada con la ética y cómo, cuáles eran los desafíos sociales que pensaban que eran más importantes, si la ciencia estaba relacionada con el género o no. También discutimos sobre estereotipos relacionados con la ciencia y de estas discusiones, ah, ahora, de estas discusiones descubrimos cuáles eran sus intereses y sus necesidades y sus preferencias y incluimos toda esta información en estas piezas de performances que más tarde mi colega Rachel de Science Made Simple les mostrará un ejemplo. Nosotros llamamos a estas nuevas performances como actividades de educación y innovación basadas en la ciencia. Y las testamos en 35 escuelas secundarias con más de 2.000 estudiantes solo para ver si estas performances hacían algún cambio en sus motivaciones. Y lo hicieron de alguna manera, pero, y ustedes verán la performance después, pero queríamos ir un paso más lejos. Y en lugar de tener los comunicadores de la ciencia actuando estas performances, involucramos a los estudiantes de la escuela secundaria en la creación de sus propias performances. Así que aquí, como nuestros colegas en Ucrania, trabajamos en, nos fomentamos en una educación... we work on a, we foster an educational process based on inquiry-based learning. So the students had to choose a scientific topic and with the help of early-career researchers that were there in the schools, they had to conduct a mini-research on the scientific topic to create a script and then perform this script. So it was not only about the scientific concept, but also about working with researchers through this inquiry-based learning process to find out how the scientific topic was investigated, what for, what societal challenges wanted to address, what were the ethical issues behind it. And we did it last year with, well, at the beginning of this year, with six schools in the three countries. And we tested if our approach that was following a series of activities through workshops worked. And we are testing again this participatory educational process with more schools the next year. So we engaged more than 100 students in this first stage. And I will, I want to show you an example of one of the pieces, of the performances that came out in the UK. And let's see if the video works. It doesn't.
Hello, everyone. I'm Flo.
And I'm Samir.
I'm Callum.
Today, we're going to be showing you a banana piano. So Samir, do you want to demonstrate how it works? And Callum? You could also make a chain using people, so... It still works as... It works because the, you need electricity is conducted through your circuit. And at the moment, this is an incomplete circuit. And when you connect your hand to it, it completes the circuit and the electricity flows around your body.
Is that it?
Yeah.
That's great. Very good.
This is a short example because they performed it in front of the other students and it was longer than that. And then we recorded the video. But it was a new experience for them. And we assessed the process. First of all, we created the assessment framework methodology. We have, I want, I will not explain it because this is already published in this International Journal of Science Education. And you can access, this is an open access article, so you can download it when you want. It's a framework for the assessment of these responsible research and innovation values within the science education field. And we used methodology, pre-post, surveys, observation, interviews, and focus group with the different actors involved. That means researchers, teachers, and the students. And these are, we are still analyzing the data. And these are some preliminary results for the case study in the UK. We saw that the use of basques, that is, this piece of performance is called basque, within science education can contribute to engage students in science and also to foster their learning about scientific concepts. They tell us, they told us that they enjoy working together. So we also foster these collaboration skills that are important when doing science because scientists, we don't work isolated, we work with other people and also in their future lives. And also that they input their knowledge. And another, the type of skills that this kind of process was fostering was that communication skills because they had to go in front of an audience and communicate what they are doing. And these kind of activities could also have a potential impact on their self-confidence, which is very important at that age, during adolescence. Also, teachers told us that the role of early-career researchers was key. So to have the researchers who are doing real science with them and to have this contact was a first experience for most of them who never went to a research center. And they changed some of the stereotypes they had in mind, that scientists are only men, redressed with a white coat, working in a laboratory. Yeah, like crazy, doing dangerous things. This image changed. But we have a lot of work to do yet and still. And we will be addressing some issues in the second round of workshops because we found that, for instance, the gender gap in science was not reduced. This is some from the surveys, some preliminary results. But you can see in the graphics that still boys are more interested in studying or have more, a more clear idea about their intention of studying a scientific career than girls. And that this, the graphic did not change at all from before and after workshops. And this is common in the three case studies. So the last, the last thing that I'm going to talk about is the training that we are providing to the researchers that are participating in the workshops because you cannot throw person there to the schools without providing some training on communication skills. We did a training program last year in which participated more than 50 researchers and then some of them went to the schools. And just last week, we started the second round of trainings in Barcelona to foster or to improve the communication skills and engagement skills of researchers. And we have now 20 of them who are PhD students or postdocs who are very motivated and they are very, also interested in improving the way that they could communicate, they can communicate science because they feel that they don't have these skills. And finally, what we are doing in Perform is also related to policymaking. And I will let the floor to my colleague Marga.
Thank you very much. Isabel, Isabel is our coordinator in the University of Barcelona of the project. She has do, she gave a very interesting insight of the project, how really the project is developed, how the project is going on and is still going on. But we have also a very important part of the project that is the policy aspect. So how, what we want, what's the message we want to give? What the policy briefing that we want to create through our experience in Perform? And we have Marga Gualsolé. Dr. Marga Solé is a member of the high-level advisory group of for research, science, and innovation to the European Commission, Carlos Moedas. She's project director of the AAAAS, the American Association for Advancement in Science, and a long-term collaborator of UNESCO. And actually, the beginning of the project, Perform, was created by brainstorm that we had in Mallorca and in our hometown where I was invited to discuss of this, of this project. And Marga was our godmother. So Marga, please.
This is not the performance yet. My expectations are because I'm not the performer even though the lights are out. Thank you for being here. It's really wonderful to see. Okay, I was saying that I'm not going to perform, so don't get your hopes up. The performer is Rachel, even if we don't have lights. So as Casimiro was saying, okay. I, I, my, I work at AAAAS in Washington DC, one of the co-organizers of this meeting. But I have other hats. And one of my favorite hats is my collaboration with UNESCO for a long time. I want to talk about the, something very particular about this project. Not only how it started, it started in my house in a brainstorming, overlooking the sea, in a setting like this one with very unconventional partners, right? And I want to try to demonstrate how that is a strength and how thinking outside the box sometimes is really what we need to innovate in research, especially in education. And also how the composition of this consortium really speaks to how we try to bridge the science policy-society interface. So the Perform project has four, the partners are four universities, three science performance teams, two international networks, and one social enterprise. So it's already a very unconventional group. And when we were thinking about this project, the call for Horizon 2020 was beginning, the European flagship project, I was at the same time appointed in this high-level advisory group to advise Commissioner Moedas in science diplomacy, science innovation, open... He has three O's, open science, open innovation, and open to the world. Those are the pillars of his vision for his mandate as commissioner. And having UNESCO as a partner was very important because having a direct reach into all countries, all the member states, direct linkages that you can translate those results of the research and those innovations directly into ministries of education and ministries of science around the world. That was very powerful. And I think it was one of the key in the score that we got from the Commission. We couldn't really believe that this very eclectic project was worth it. We were very, very pleased. And we were even more pleased to learn that the inclusion of UNESCO as a partner was key in this science policy linkage and interface. And the idea is when we write research proposals, sometimes we, more and more, not sometimes, more often we are asked to address societal challenges and policy priorities. And as scientists, we don't always know how to do that. So in the, so the broader policy framework for the Commission is to promote creative and innovative formal and informal teaching in STEM and how we can use, or we can foster young people to become the forces of innovation and agents of change to address societal challenges and the recognition that there is a shortage of qualified STEM professionals and we need new approaches to bridge that gap. Of course, there were many stereotypes that we were trying to address. And we've heard in this conference how those stereotypes about scientists, especially about women, those are holding many of our young people back when choosing STEM careers. And really not, they're not really aspiring to be scientists because somehow those perceptions and stereotypes are detrimental. So when we wrote this project, we immediately thought about looking at the policy frameworks. And those are usually big PDFs that you find on websites of places like the European Commission and UNESCO. And not everybody pays them the attention that they deserve. But when you align your research proposal to those policy frameworks, we think we have, you have a higher chance, a better chance of succeeding. And that's what we believe it happens. So we looked at two reports. We are still looking at two reports. Some of them continue to evolve. One is the Rethinking Education Report by UNESCO and how we will frame education towards the common good and achieving our sustainable development goals that I will talk about in a minute. And then the European Commission Science Education for Responsible Citizenship Report that Isabel was talking about. How do we align ourselves with those policy priorities? And I'm not going to go through all of them. But basically, what Perform is about is really about how science is an essential component of a learning continuum from very little kids in preschool to engage citizenship, lifelong learning of science, and how we shift from STEM to STEAM, STEM to STEAM. So incorporate the A, the arts, so this is what Perform is about and how do we use and harness the performing arts to increase interest in science. And also enhancing the quality of teaching. So sometimes we hear that the biggest complaint is that teachers are not valued, teachers are underpaid. So there are issues not just about the student aspirations, but also the teachers. And we really need to take a look at how teachers are trained for this 21st century education that we need. And then how do we collaborate amongst stakeholders? So it's academia, but also informal education and the performing groups that we involve in the Perform project really show how this multidisciplinary and inter- and trans-disciplinary collaboration is necessary. And as I was talking about, this eclectic group of actors that make up the Perform Consortium, this is a testament of that. And then obviously, the research, the responsible research and innovation framework is, as Isabel, as I was saying, the guiding principle for the European Commission and Horizon 2020. So really having a reflective attitude towards science and not only involving the scientists in the decisions about science, but the whole society approach on how we, how do we make decisions about science and about technology? And what research are we going to pursue? And the values, and the value judgments that we need to make. And we don't train scientists for that properly yet. So the frameworks are very important as well because they give you, sometimes frameworks can be very abstract and very broad. The Sustainable Development Goals, we talked about them extensively in this conference. Sometimes they are so broad and so all-encompassing that they sound like an obstacle instead of, like, I don't know how to relate. But actually, they relate to everything. So you can always find in the Sustainable Development Goals an overarching framework that you can pitch your project and connect your project to. So the Perform project, as Casimiro was saying, is being piloted in three countries. But by no means is limited to those three countries. The value of having the UK, France, and Spain is that now we have toolkits and activities in three languages. So already, there is a huge opportunity to bring those innovative methods and trainings to most of the world because those are three, two, three of the three most spoken languages in the world. So now we can have a broader reach through UNESCO and other policy partners to really try to disseminate those innovations into the educational curriculums around the world. And there are toolkits for everybody, for all groups. So toolkits for students, for teachers, for early-career scientists, and also for science museums. And if you're interested, you can talk to us afterwards and come to the conference. It hasn't been announced yet, but Casimiro will announce the conference in Paris next year and on how we can disseminate this. And the project will be, hopefully, sustainable by then and incorporate those innovations in education throughout many other countries. So here are a few ideas on how can you benefit, meaning that you can talk to us about bringing workshops and trainings. And also, we can send you those toolkits. And Isabel can update you on the status, how many are in each language, and what's the progress for them. And really, the, I think our main success was that we always, we just had this idea and we thought, this is really different. And instead of being deterred by that, we thought that was our strength. And involving, as I was saying, UNESCO as the policy partner was extremely important. And now we hope that the reach is going to be global because UNESCO is a global organization. So we will leave you with the performance very soon.
Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Marga, I'm really happy, we have been talking about no isolation, conveying values. So again, I go back to the building peace in the mind of men and women and young men and women. Science is the neutral territory where we can convey these values. We need to use this space to work together involving different stakeholders. As you can see, the project Perform is trying to involve different levels to convey these values, to make these values a reality, to include these values in the education of young people. to include these values in the education of young people. And this is something that we believe is important in UNESCO but as well as in our partners' organization and of course is the team of our World Science Forum this year, Science for Peace. So what we are doing is absolutely in the vein of this conference today. And I'm happy now to introduce our. Thank you. I'm really happy to introduce to you our last speaker, but I would say performer, Rachel Manson, that is a social director at Science Made Simple. Science Made Simple is one of our partners, is a science communication company based in UK. So Rachel, please.
I have some good news for you. I have a loud voice and I have a balloon. I also don't have very much power point. And I usually like to start. I know I'm speaking when I'm taking my shoes on. I don't know why, but I feel better when I have my shoes on. Can I ask you all, please, to raise a hand? Isn't it amazing that I keep asking people in the right way, they will do what you say? Okay, hi. Yay. Yay. Oh, no, you're not raising your hands anymore. Thank you. Okay, now put your hand down, please, if you think you might be somebody in the room who's maybe a little older. Okay, so put your hand down if you think you may be. Okay, I'm not old, but I'm not young. That's me. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So put your hand down now if you are not still at school. Still at school? No. So this is the people I like to work with, the people still at school. You are all too old. You are too old, your brains are no longer stretchy. Yeah, so I'm sorry, but I don't want to work with you. I'm looking for my presentation and I cannot find it, everybody. I've lost my presentation. It doesn't actually matter. Okay, you've heard a little bit about this project. It is working with school pupils and it is working with, I've lost it. And it is working with researchers. It's on there. No pressure, no pressure. There's no pressure. You've heard a little bit about the project at the moment. You know that we work with school pupils in France and Spain and in the UK and you know that we're working with researchers. That's me. Down. Hi, everybody. My name is Rachel Mason and I work for Science Made Simple. We work with people all over the world and we engage publics in science. We're a small company, but we will work with anybody and we like to inspire the next generation of scientists and engineers. We do not teach science and engineering. We like to inspire people. We like to develop people's appetite for being involved with science at whatever level suits them and to get them involved with culture of science. So you've heard that we're doing clowning in France in this project, stand-up comedy in Spain and busking in the UK. I know what you're all thinking. What is busking? Busking is street performance and it's not like performance in the way that we're doing it here now. You have all come into the room, sat down and are paying attention very kindly to us on stage. Busking is quite different. It happens in the street and you have to work to engage your audience. You cannot engage an audience until you have an audience. And so really, street performance and science busking is much more about bringing the audience to you because they are interested rather than because they have paid to come or they're already at the conference. And so the work that we've been doing in the UK with this project is about taking researchers into schools and this is an example of one here. This is Lindsay Dutton. She works for the University of Bristol in the Oral Microbiology Department. And she went into schools last year and she worked with a small group of pupils. They are about 12 or 13 years old, so they're still stretchy, they are creative, they're interested and they're excited about oral microbiology. Lindsay found it really very difficult to get her students interested in teeth. But she worked with the students, she talked to them a lot. It was important as part of this project for the students to learn about Lindsay as a person, to understand how her research contributes to society, what kind of person she is because it's important within this project that students learn about the personalities within science so that they don't think of themselves as something for whom it's not achievable. She worked with students who were interested in animals and so she started to develop activities with them that they could present to the public, which were about cicada wings, for instance, looking at innovative ways of developing structures for. Cicada wings have tiny nano pillars on them, little tiny pillars on the wings onto which bacteria can't, they can't stick. They will burst the cell walls when bacteria land on them. If we can turn that research into something on a hip replacement, for example, or a knee replacement or a tooth replacement, then we have used science from nature. We have engaged those students with that researcher. This year, we are training 15 researchers in Bristol and there they are. They've already started. They're all eagerly working out their new designs to develop science busking techniques with students. They start going with students in January. Okay, so that is enough about it. You probably would like to know about the balloon. Yes, good. Okay. This is one of the activities that we would do with our students. It's called Think, Pair, Share. And I would like you to use this activity to think about a serious global science problem. And I mean a serious global science problem. Have you ever wondered how to get a mobile phone into a balloon? Yes? No? Okay, well, I'd like you to wonder about it now, but I would like you to think, how are we going to get this into this? Easy says yourself. Okay. But then I would like you to turn to your neighbor, please. And I would like you to join your neighbor and have a little conversation. Introduce yourself to your neighbor, just spend a little minute and tell your neighbor where you're from and then tell them something interesting about you personally, not your work. Tell them something interesting about you personally. I'm going to give you one minute to do that. And then I would like you to have a little chat about how you think you would get the balloon, the mobile phone into the balloon. Go. Hello, have some balloons. Send them down. Take your mobile phones out and have a go. Lots of ideas coming now. Anybody checking their emails is doing the wrong thing. Happy? You've done it. Somebody's done it. Very good. Hey. Okay, there's some good ideas and some really bad ideas. Fantastic. Okay. Yeah, it's okay. Beautiful. Beautiful. Very small mobile phone, nice and easy. Okay, you might be wondering a little bit. Have you met somebody interesting? Yes? Have you learned something personal about somebody? What we really hope that we will do with our researchers and our students. Well, you say they have to try, but you don't have to ask them to try, they just do. Okay, kids, settle down. Some people are very determined, so let me show you. Blow off your balloon. It is not my intention to burst the balloon. You have to blow it up quite big. If I apply a force here and I let out the air here. Who did it that way? Who did it another way? Yeah, good, well done. And actually, it doesn't really matter how you do it and students do it in all sorts of ways. The idea is not to teach a lot of science, but to get your hands on ordinary things and do things that will attract audiences and help students and researchers work together so that they can share information and learn more about each other's lives. But the nice thing, just to finish, the nice thing about children is that they have another idea and they take something a little step further. They take something a little step further than adults often do, which is lovely. So when I was practicing this at home with my own son, who's 12, who is the same age as the students that we're working with, the first thing he wanted to do straight away was answer his next question, which is, what happens if you take a selfie with your phone inside a balloon? Thank you very much, everybody. That is more or less what we're doing with students and that is the end.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Rachel. This was a zip of what we are doing through Perform and Rachel was extremely helpful to show to you what, the way that we are trying to work together, scientists and young students to promote scientific careers, to promote scientific motivation, I would say, like creating the motivation in young students for science. And this, again, is the tool that we want to use to install and to convey the values of peace. Now I will open the floor to questions to our panelists. So please feel free. One, two, three, four. Oh, my God. Let's start from the first line. The first one.
I'm from Ukraine, from university. And two questions, if it's possible. One question for you. What is the principal difference between scientific education tool and art education tool? And for you, who should? Yesterday, we heard a lot of times that future belongs to young people. Who must teach whom? Children, adult or adult children? You understand? Because we can, old people, people, adult, we can teach only this past, some experience with our past, but we need to hear something from future. So it's a paradox to teach children. So two questions. Okay, thank you.
I think one of the interesting things about the project as we've done it is that the researchers that have taken part have been very surprised and invigorated by the students' questions and the way students have phrased their questions. That has changed the way they've thought about their research. So Lindsay, the example that I showed you, she really hadn't thought about her research from the perspective of those children and they brought out new questions and new thoughts to her and they found things interesting and intriguing that she hadn't thought were interesting and intriguing. And so in that respect, the students were certainly teaching the researchers. You asked another question about differences between art. art, performance tools and teaching tools? I'm not, I don't think there are any differences really. The way that you would go about science is more or less the way you would go about developing a performance, which is try things, experiment, fail, change a few variables, experiment, fail. And finally, with any luck, succeed. No difference.
The second question, I would say that the, the learning experience is always a bilateral experience. I, I strongly believe that a young person is a white page in which we can write something. But at the same time, when we have the page in front of us, we're, we're gonna think about and we are gonna learn about. So we are gonna take something and give something. But of course, the experience that the, the, the young scientists have, it's helpful to build good values, convey, again, I will repeat, convey good values to, to young people. At the same time, taking from them, absolutely. It's, it's a bilateral process.
This is Mateo? Okay. I have a comment related to what you said just said. And children are whiteboard, we are writing, oh, this is... We have to revise to Yanni. Review the, the concept. Anyhow, we're working on STEM. What we lack of is how to build the activities. This is the issue. Your researchers are the team who built the activities. The core, the core in this, the philosophy is well known. How important is clear. But how to construct activities, the content of the activities? Do you have your own resources or you built it yourself?
Thanks a lot for this, this fantastic section here. I, I'm impressed to learn about this Perform idea. I've never heard that you guys are working on this and producing these fantastic materials. I'm from the United States, so I'm wondering, is this more widely disseminated in the, in the European Union, in the UK? Do every, do people from the UK here have heard about this before? And if not, how can you get this out so that educators like myself can start practicing with these things? Because I think this is the education revolution underway. How can we learn about these things?
You know, I hear all you people talking about education, science, engineering, chemistry, physics, whatever. I think the problem in the Arab world, in this part of the world, it's, it's to have qualified teachers and to have programs for training of teachers. Because we want to see how the teachers could communicate with the students and how we can get to the students. And I believe this is the most important issue in this part of the world. So I don't know what you think about this.
Let's make another round. We will answer to this question Rachel wanted to ask.
You see, now the problem with three questions is I've forgotten what the first question was. About the activities produ, production. In, in this particular project, Science Made Simple, the company doing the busking in the UK, we, we are facilitating training in busking with the researchers and then working in schools with the researchers and the school students. Both the researchers and the students are putting together the activities and they are making them, but they're doing it with our help. So we're having, at the moment, the researchers are thinking on their ideas at the moment and they will start having conversations with us about suitable materials. But we will help them make things. But mostly, they're using very day-to-day objects, you know, things out of your fridge in your kitchen and bathroom. And so it's, it's deliberately very low, low tech. And so it, it becomes achievable for everybody.
If I can, it's not easy. We're not saying that is easy. We're just saying that there is a new way, an innovative way, to catch the attention of young people, to interest, to create motivation, to raise their interest in science. And that sometimes, we are teaching in the same way in which Charles the Great was teaching in the Middle Age. So I think that probably we should try to change nowadays the approach to create more interest. And that will answer also to Isabel. I will answer to your question now about the outcomes and how to spread. This is the UNESCO role in this project. I'm in charge of the project in UNESCO. And we are an intergovernmental, intergovernmental organization. We have member states always with us, I mean, working with us. And what I'm doing in UNESCO is trying to, to spread the information about our activities through our electoral groups, through our meetings and conferences, through international events like this one or others that are gonna, for example, is off in, in, in July. And we will have our big conference in June that we showed that where all the member states are invited. And then, you know, member states, our delegation are the door. I mean, you're from US now, it's maybe not the best moment, but it's the door to our, to your governments. So, and to institutions, to the networks. UNESCO has this, the power of networking. So the, the center in Ukraine is an example, for example, for us to, to, to develop the project outside. But yes, this is. June 2018, next June. So. Exactly. We're working hard to make you hear about it. I'm doing my best, believe me. It's not so easy.
Following this answer, just let me say that we have been working in Perform since two years ago. And this is a research project. And as you know, science is slow. So we are, we just tested this first trying of activities and methods with 100, so far, students. And we are now improving these methodologies, these activities that will be tested in 2018. So the, the, our aim is to develop these toolkits and activities by the end of 2018, next year. And so next year will be the, the year of the outreach and dissemination of, of results. And regarding teachers, it's true that I didn't, I, I didn't say, yeah. I, I forgot to say that we are also working in training on teachers, for teachers. Because we have realized that when we went to the schools to conduct these activities, teachers were supposed to participate, but they remain in a way, you know, in, in the back of, of the classroom and let the floor to us because they feel that they are not ready for using this, this kind of artistic method, no? So last year, this summer, sorry, we tested one week training for teachers in Barcelona with four teachers that were interested in attending it. They were very happy, but teachers were not, so it was a voluntary, no? And they, they have some points or score for their curriculums. But even we have this, this compensation, we only got four teachers. So it's not only about the qualification of the teachers, but also how we motivate teachers to be interested in using these new methodologies. And this will take a lot of effort to do that. So thank you.
Yes, I would like to. My gentleman, thank you for your really, I mean, question you raise up. Because it's, we know, especially he mentioned about Jordan and Arab board. Really, this is a serious and important issue. We talk about many things about, for example, about dip, about, I mean, and job, many things. And I believe it's like the main issue of all those problems and negative issue in Arab board is education field. And we believe like, I mean, four main, it's we can pillars or issue the most important four things in education. Start by teacher and student. Then go to, I mean, a course, outline curriculum and menage. And the fourth one, the most important one mentioned as a tools or other thing, it's environment, either classroom, university, laboratory, I mean, accessories, mobile applications, those are the thing. The fourth one, it's environment. Those are the four main pillars or issue. It's important actually, not just one. Either teacher or student, curriculum. And also to, to fill in the mind and also the fourth one, it's the environment from class and everything involved to building and accessibility and laboratory and so on. Thank you.
I would like to ask about the impact of this program. Because when you're saying about you go to a classroom, you provide this class. It's a one-time maybe, or it's a weekly, I don't know. But then after that, after a year, after two years, what will happen? What did they gain? We implemented a program called Young Innovators Lab where we use math and science as tools to help children acquire skills in critical thinking. But at the end of the project, or it's a one year. At the end of the one year, they have to do a project. And these projects turn out to be wonderful projects that sometimes we even register them for their intellectual property and as innovations. These are ages between 10 to 13. And here you mentioned that, someone mentioned that it's better to start at 14. So with this, we see an impact. Because at the end of the day, you have a project. But with your program, what is the impact? How did you study it? Because is it after this year, will they continue or what?
Yeah, we will. Yeah, and then you, you.
Okay, just a quick question. And it may be beyond the scope of the project, but I'm just curious because we, we saw some information about gender and the, the fact that maybe there wasn't much difference after than before in terms of motivation of girls. And I wonder whether that's something that you've looked at in any more depth in terms of what appeals to girls? Is it, is it different to what appeals to boys? I thought the video clip was quite interesting. And for me, a little bit telling, because the girl was in the middle and she was facilitating and she was talking, but she wasn't actually doing. The two boys were doing. Now, that may be just coincidence, but I'm just curious if you've had any further thoughts on that or whether it's something that you can differentiate within the project.
I know that the time is running out and I cannot tell you at all what I want to tell you. But I just wonder if any of you had a chance to see what was done on teaching with art, music, dance and drama, science for the last 25, 30 years with millions of dollars from the National Science Foundation, where we worked in the US in the inner cities where very poor schools and using these tools with doing research with controlled groups in every school, probably with tens of thousands of students, what showed the results of using the performing, performing science for students to learn by performing, that they by themselves design if they want to dance a concept or they want to sing a concept or they want to do a drama of the concept. So there is a lot that was done in the last 30 years on that with a lot of research on that. Now, kitchen science is another thing that was done a lot in this school. Because there is an old African proverb that says, it takes a village to raise a child. So we worked with the parents, with the teachers and with the children to teach everybody how to do performing arts. And let me tell you, none of you is too old to learn to dance a concept. If we would have time, I would put all of you to dance a concert. But there is no time to do it. None of you is too old to do it. I would have shown it to you, but there is no time to do it.
Never say that. That's not me.
So nobody is too old to learn.
Well, let's, tonight we will say, please, the next question and then Maji.
My question.
Yes, please.
Isabel, okay. Do you think we do, we need to have customized kit at least for region to, to match their pain and need? For example, Dr. Yusuf say in the beginning of this presentation that our need in Jordan to advise the kids and the young to become entrepreneurship in the future. I think we need a customized kit that suits Arab region needs and Jordanian needs instead of general kit.
Just a small comment. I think the biggest problem we had with education, so-called traditional, is that this was an education based on fear. Actually, you were trying to scare children not to learn. Now, the whole idea of changing it would be to make it more pleasant. Now, science and art is an activity that requires freedom and must give joy. We are scientists because we love it. Now, how to make it a young kid to understand that a failure in science or in art does not necessarily mean a failure in general? You have to motivate them. And I think a positive element in the way you teach them. So telling them that it doesn't matter and that they are good anyway and so on is very important and don't scare them.
There was the lady.
Well, actually, I, I was here in this session because I have two young boys. One is four and a half and the other one is two. And I don't like the way they are teaching them at school right now. And I was, I was very interested in this subject because I wanted to learn more as a parent. So my question is, is how you are having the parents into this project? And the second question, please. Actually, in, in Jordan, we have a special situation of refugees. And the children are suffering in the camps because of the situation. And all of them needs to get back to their normal life by learning how and loving to go back to schools and to learn more about this. So do you have any collaboration with, with, with the Middle East and the developing countries about the refugees and, and how you are working with them? And of course, they, it will teach, it will, it will let them to have a high, high, high self-esteem and of course, learn, learn to live and go back to their normal life faster than suffering all this.
Thank you. I will answer, we start from the impact question. This is the policy aspect, the policy part of the project. It will come later. Because now, as Isabel said, we are researching in these new innovative methodologies that are already, I'm sure that there are thousands of experience in the, in the world. We are, we are not pretending, we're not pretending to be the best in the. But, but we, through UNESCO, we want to have this policy dimension that will help to have this impact internationally. So that's what we hope to achieve with our work. And about, I will answer to the customizing aspect of, of the, of course. Of course. First of all, because you, you need to teach in local languages. We need to, to interact with local languages. We need to interact in local languages. And of course, we cannot generalize, we cannot standard... We can standardize because, I mean, in a way, methodology can be standardized, but they have to be adapted locally. And one of my main goal, I'm passionate about the Arab board and I'm, and I'm Dr. Sallar Bia. I would love to create an Arab prong of this project. We need to have partners. We need to have the authorities involved and we need to have institutional partners to create that as we had through the European Commission with these three European countries. And then Isabel will answer to the gender-related...
Yeah, and I'd also complement Casimiro's answer. We are not, we are aware that there are no blueprint solutions. So we are trying to test if these artistic performances can be helpful for improving the interest of young people in science. But our approach is not only to use performing arts but what's science education, the other, but also including the researchers, real researchers in the classroom. So of course, we are inspired by all the previous work that has been done, not only in the United States, also in America and in Europe. And we did a review on that. It's also included in the paper that I mentioned. The new thing we could say is that we are bringing researchers to the schools. And this is our added value, as I said at the beginning of my presentation. Because we think that this direct interaction is what can also support or provide a higher impact on engaging students in science. Because they have a lot of role models on TV, like football players or these models or whatever, but they don't see the real scientists in their daily lives. Because we are working with low socioeconomic and middle socioeconomic schools. So they are not used to, most of them are not used to be in contact with the research world. So yes, we are evaluating the impact. And just answering to your question, we are testing different kinds of activities in the C case studies. So in France, for instance, there are seven workshops, seven interaction of two hours in the schools each week. But in the UK, it was three weeks and four hours each week. And from these 12 hours, this came out. Of course, if we would have more time, we would have more results. But we need time from the teachers, from the science classes or other classes, which is very, very, very difficult in some curriculum plans. In Spain, we are more flexible, but in the UK, it's very difficult to get hours from teachers. So we have to deal with these limitations. And the idea is to provide, as a result, these toolkits that, as Casimiro said, could be adapted to other contexts.
Gender.
And the gender, yes. Yeah, it's interesting because if you look at gender studies, there are some researchers from the United States that have found that girls are taught like, or are said, and you were also mentioning it, the way that we, or teachers, refer to boys and girls is different. You say, "Oh, you did a good work" to the boy. And to the girl, you can say, "Oh, really? What a clever girl." So it's a surprise that girls are clever while boys are usually treated like they are. Because they are, they are born like this. So the way that teachers and also parents treat differently boys and girls also has to do with that. And we are trying to link our results with this previous literature. But as I said, we like to do slow science and we hope that in the following years we will publish the results as we published the review we did last year.
I will just add something about the refugees. We, our partners from the Big Van Theory have been to Palestine, if I'm not wrong. And of course, I will link with Professor Naraschkam. These kids, the refugees, they need everything but fear. So I think that the best way to approach them and to give a better opportunity, better situation, even just locally and momentarily is to teach, trying to have joy, to be happy and learn in a happy way. I think that that's absolutely even more important for these communities.
You know, I understand this is a project or English, French, Korean, American. What about the Norway experience? Stated in the media that Norway, they reversed the whole concept of education where they become the most successful... Finland, 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 okay. That they become the most successful program they have. What do you think? Why are not using it?
No, we are not using because we have been, when we created the... This is just a contingency situation. I mean, we created a project with partners and we were able to have partners in these three countries. So this is what we did. But this is a pilot project. Doesn't mean, the idea is to have these kind of activities all around the world. So I mean, countries, Finland probably has not the first target because I think it's much interesting to do that in the refugee camp in Jordan more than in Finland where the situation is probably much, much better. But in any case, I mean, the idea is to spread this pilot project through all policymakers, all over the world.
Actually, I'd like to thank you really about what you mentioned about, I mean, fear. This is what they put it in the student, not to love them, something to be like, positive issue. This is most important and we are suffering in Jordan, even in the maybe most Arab board or even, you know, developing country. About NGOs, there's a many NGOs, they help, we work with refugees. But the situation of refugees, not just, I mean, education-wise, even mentee-wise, psychological-wise, most, a lot of them, they are suffering a lot, either those in, I mean, in Jordan or in the refugees camps. Dr. Gentleman, he mentioned something about Finland, I don't know, Mr. Mahdi. Yeah, you mentioned about Finland, I mean, as I mean, best practices. Actually, Dr. also, he mentioned about, I mean, performance work on the values things. What we mentioned Arabic, Ta'lim bil Qiyam, as previous when the, I mean, a teacher, he has a message. Like, I mean, most of those teachers in Arab board before in Islam do have a message, I mean, with a vision and a mission. Actually, this is system completely, you know, the best education in the world. It's Finland and Japan. Japan, they teach them, you know, students from KG1 based on their value and ethics. It doesn't mean, in some time, like games, playing, but based on their values and ethics. And this is what I believe is the most important thing. The student, the student love and passion with what today you and go have. Thank you.
Time is gone. Thank you very much, thank you very much.